I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Mike Lan, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Segata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody here tonight that has come, those watching. We have a couple of announcements here real quick. Notice of a potential quorum. A quorum of the city commission may attend a meeting with the New Mexico Main Street during their annual site visit on November 14th at 3:00 PM here at City Hall. All city offices will be closed on Thursday, November 22nd, and Friday, November 23rd in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And our next regular commission meeting is Tuesday, November 27th, 6:00 PM right here in the chambers. This time we'll entertain any comments from the general public. Is there anyone wishing to address the ... okay, would you please state your name?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Dates. I live at 116 Hartmore Place. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Berry, Ms. Antonucci, it's a ... I want to just say that I've had a great time living here for six months, and it's a wonderful town. If I can bring my friends from Florida here so they can avoid hurricanes and other such disasters, they'd be just pleased as punch to live in such a wonderful place. Briefly, on Hartmore Place, it's a very short street that's a dead end, but due to the ... there's an immense amount of traffic there. A lot of people make a wrong turn, they'll turn around there, there's commercial vehicles, UPS, post office truck, the garbage truck, and everyone's turning around there at the end. My concern is that the street has deteriorated because we had a lot of rain. Thank God we had a lot of rain. And I would ask the commission if they can take a look at it and maybe even fill in the potholes. More importantly, at the end of the street, there's a manhole cover, and I believe there's some utilities underneath the street. It's right at the end of the embankment. My concern is because of the way the street has been dug up because of cars running in the mud and trucks coming by there, that there needs to be some way to stop people from driving over that. More importantly, I have actually observed cars and trucks driving down the embankment. There's like a little path that's been made there, and it helps destroy the integrity of the embankment. So I would ask that whoever's responsible at the city, please look at that. I think a couple of concrete barriers would prevent anyone from driving down there, which helps destroy that embankment and its integrity, as well as maybe over that manhole cover and the utilities which are very important for us over there on Hartmore Place.
Alrighty.
That's all I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll have Mr. Berry and his staff take a look.
Yeah, and I'll address that a little bit. We have looked at another issue on the embankment, so I'm pretty familiar with that. And we'll talk about the asphalt recycler a little bit later in the meeting, but that allows us to do street maintenance even in cold weather, which is an improvement over the past year or so. That's not a problem, we can do that maintenance. But yeah, we'll look at the traffic control. I think we can come up with a good solution for that out there, because if traffic is driving all the way over that embankment, that's a problem.
Certainly is.
So we will definitely take a look at that, and we'll go out tomorrow and talk about that and try to get that resolved, so.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to wish everyone on the panel a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome to Raton.
Very much.
Alright, anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move into the business section. Item 6A, approval of the October 23 regular commission meeting minutes. They were provided for you. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 23, 2018 minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as read. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on event forum for Raton Main Street Festival of Lights, November 23rd. Brenda, would you like to address this, or is it all self-explanatory?
Sorry.
That's alright. You're sitting there, you're gonna get called on.
(Laughter) Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Scott and Michael Lan. It should be very self-explanatory. It's the same thing that we have done in most recent years. This year we're adding some kids' games.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting. We have some new partners this year, so we would like to ask that the city Christmas tree be lit that night, and that's the Friday night, so that we're not competing with Trinidad.
Okay.
And hopefully we can have a big crowd here, and then on Saturday, if everybody would like to, they can go to Trinidad after Santa Claus comes to town on Saturday afternoon.
Absolutely.
So, that's it.
Do you anticipate floats from Trinidad?
Well, we're trying. We're trying. We're working with their main street program as well, because we know that a lot of our floats go over there.
Right.
And I was very excited today. I had two new float entries come into my office, so.
Cool.
We're gonna do it. Plus, we're revealing the new city logo.
Nice.
Through our branding process at the Festival of Lights, so it's pretty exciting.
Cool. Looking forward to it.
Yep.
Any question, any other questions for Ms. Berry? Would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event, the Festival of Lights, on November 23rd. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Item C, report on current status of water resources for City of Raton. Raton Water Works General Manager, Dan Campbell.
Oh, boy.[461.31][461.31](Laughter)
And he's on your board.
Yes, he is. This, just to kind of give a quick update, because I know there's been some concern that have been voiced to me and some other places, just to let the commission know where we currently stand. Lake Malloya is approximately six foot below spillway. Where we're looking at, that's about still 3,000 acre feet. Malloya is actually 66 feet deep. At this point, we ... Eagles Nest Lake has 30,000 acre feet in it, and Raton has a full storage at 12,000 acre feet. The issue is post-fire. It has been a difficult year to try to run on the Simroon system. We've actually been able to run on it in October. About 40% of Raton's water came out of it in the month of October. This, so far in November, you know, approaching halfway through the month, we've gotten 75% of it out of the river. River quality's calmed down a lot. It's not into the monsoon season. It has moved a lot of sediment from irrigators on down the line. If anybody's seen it, the river's been tremendously affected from what was one of the most beautiful parts of the state again, similar to what we went through in the track fire. This one's gonna take years to recover from. We will be battling this for a while. We will continue to monitor the situation, and we will run just as long as we can on the river, trying to, you know, take care of Malloya as much as possible. The water board is closely monitoring that. As we go into the spring, we'll decide based on then what kind of snowpack we get, as to how much water goes into Malloya, as to whether Raton needs to take any steps as we go into spring usage. Right now, Raton's at its low usage for winter, but there will be some decisions to make. This last storm helped. I talked to the ... McGuyver up at the park up there, and he actually had six to nine inches of snow, almost a half inch of moisture that fell up there to where, you know, it's a start anyway. We'll continue to monitor that situation. The issue with Simroon is gonna be as we go into next year and we get into summer months, we may have that water in Eagles Nest Lake, but can we get it to our delivery point in still a usable fashion? We have been down there with equipment and completely buried the intake screen in the river several times this year, and to the point tried to control the sand and the sediment as we've been operating through October to this point. It's a daily trip as we're cleaning and making sure we're not plugged in as moving forward. But we will continue to try to get everything we can out of that supply. It's gonna just be a tough few years here as we see how the watershed recovers on that area. We've actually come up with some operational strategies. What we'll try to do is run as much through the winter and into the spring and try to avoid that monsoon season as much as possible when all the sediment's moving. Simroon River quality right now is same as it's always been. It's less than 10 inches, which is a pretty crystal clear water. That is not what happens during the monsoon season. It is rough stuff. I've actually shown some videos of what we've seen of some of the events to the water board. It's a tough situation, and it's gonna be that way for a while. And actually, just an update on that side, we are well aware of it. Typically, we are quite often, as you go into March, we've been four to five feet down. We are right now at six foot. You know, we'll continue to monitor that closely. And as I said earlier, we're trying to get every drop we can out of the Simroon system, and we will just as long as the weather ... the thing on the river is ice. You know, we actually had some battles with that last night on it, but we'll continue to try to pull as long as the weather lets us.
Alrighty. Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
And anything that does need to happen in spring, if we need to look at our usage or any type of issues in Raton's usage, the water boards monitor that, and we will be coming to the commission on that. To where if anybody has any questions, just contact me at the water office, and I update them as we go through this. We are closely watching you.
Appreciate it, Dan.
Yeah, we do.
Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Good comment. The water department has worked diligently down there.
Yes.
In fact, they worked Friday, Saturday, and Sunday 12-hour shifts, making sure that they were trying to unplug that in, so they need kudos on that.
Absolutely. Seems like every time I go to the senior center, I'm passing one of you guys on the road there.
Yeah, it's been ... we've actually never seen that since the Simroon system. In my 27 years here, where we moved so much sediment that the line between it, we had a pipe that was half full of sand that we had to deal with. It just that much moved down, and it's just all over the place. The irrigators are dealing with it. That's an issue that post-fire, depending on the weather cycle, it's gonna always be a battle. We saw the same thing for several years after the track fire, and this issue's gonna be going on in Simroon also.
Do we know if they ever got any seed down at all?
I've heard they've actually done some, and that there's some plants coming into the spring, and this year prior to that, that they're gonna try to put some down in some areas. It's just such a vast area that was affected, and part of what really makes it tough on this fire is actually so much of it was flooded. There's a lot of really tough slopes to deal with. And as the city manager's well aware, we've dealt with is once you start some head cutting in some of those areas, it's tough to bring it back. We did the river stewardship funding just on the Secret Street Creek, just trying to stop some of the erosion issues up there. As you can imagine, the several drainage areas between U Park and the edge of Simroon, there's a lot of areas that are vertical enough to where they are gonna try to headcut and move sediment forward. That's gonna be a tough issue to battle for a while. And we've had a few big rains up there. As you look at some of the drainages up there, you can actually see where it's actually just incised down into some of the creeks that are just looking right at take. That doesn't resolve itself quickly. It's gonna take some time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item D, introduction of ordinance amending Section 90.999 of the animal control ordinance. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, back in August of 2017, the commission had taken action on the animal care and control ordinance, and that action essentially replaced the old animal control ordinance. And previous to that, there was an extensive amount of work put into that ordinance, and some significant changes with that ordinance. You'll remember that we had a committee that worked between staff, a commission representative, and some interested citizens to put that together. That took a lot of work and some time. And then that ordinance came in front of the commission, and if you remember, there were a couple of significant changes in there. One of those significant changes was in the ability to breed pets, dogs, or cats. And under that ordinance, that's really limited to only certain breeders of registered-type dogs, and so the average citizen really can't ... has to neuter their pets as the effect of that. And if you don't, that's in violation of the ordinance. It would regulate the number of pets that you could have without having a kennel license. There were certain elements to that, but it covered the violations in that also. And really, that section was not changed. Subsequent to the passage of that, our animal control department has written a significant number of citations for various violations. And we do try to get the word out to the public, because that's a significant change. A lot of people that received the citation said, "I didn't know about this," and they wound up going to court to meet with the judge. Now, in municipal court, the court said, "We're not able to resolve these citations in court because the ordinance referenced the offense as a misdemeanor, and we think that it should state that it's a petty misdemeanor." Now, there's been some debate over whether that's correct or not, but Mayor, we've talked to the Ratonian Main Society, and we agree we would just bring that revision to the commission, so that's what this item consists of. In that ordinance, we are suggesting that we revise the ordinance, and the offense would be considered a petty misdemeanor. And so you see that in the introduction of an ordinance that's in front of you. That is the revision to the ordinance.
Right. Any comments, questions? This is an introduction of the ordinance, so there won't be any action yet.
I do have one question, just for clarification. What is the difference between a misdemeanor and a petty misdemeanor?
Mayor Pro Tim, I would say there's not a precedent for this. I have not ... in the old ordinance, the penalty was a misdemeanor, and other municipal ordinances, the offense is listed as a misdemeanor. I don't know a precedence for a statutory listing of a petty misdemeanor. I would say that it would be a possible fine that might be administered by the court, but the court has said that this is important for them to hear these cases that specify it as a petty misdemeanor.
So it does clarify here that petty misdemeanor and shall be punished by a fine not exceeding 5,000 or imprisonment for a term not exceeding 90 days, or both?
That's the same as a misdemeanor.
I think that should read $500.
$500, okay.
I apologize.
I was wondering about that.
No, I think it should read ...
That seemed pretty excessive.
$500, so I'm glad we're looking at that.
Okay. So, and that is then less of a fine and less of a ...
No, the fine stayed the same, if I'm correct. Mr. Berry, correct?
I can tell you, Mayor, Commissioner, that we have dealt with a number of pet owners, and for the most part, the public has said, "I didn't know about this," but they have corrected whatever the situation is. The other, I think, big change in the ordinance was chaining your dog in some fashion, tethering the dog, that's not allowed, and you would have to build a fence, and you can't allow the dog to run around. So the fence is required, that's a big change. And it's really due to, number one, the overpopulation problem that we have in pets. Now, you know, feral cats, we haven't really figured out who you hold responsible for cats that really don't have an owner, but a lot of people have been responsible to that, and also the chaining or the fencing issue. So we've resolved a lot of problems without the court taking actions, but you are ... you do have people ... there are some inhumane situations out there where the way a pet is chained currently, and we still see this, we need to have this ability to go to court and get that fixed. But the majority of people, they comply, you know, even though the court is throwing these citations out, or has so far.
Yeah. In my discussion with a couple of attorneys, they know of no difference between a misdemeanor and a petty misdemeanor, but.
I would say that's true.
We will appease the officers of the court.
If it makes their job easier, yeah.
Sure.
But this is just an introduction, correct? We're not voting on this.
Yes. It's just an introduction.
So then we would have to go through the normal posting of the ordinance change, set up a public hearing, I believe, and before we could take final action with the commission.
Sure, good.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Berry? Ready, thank you, sir. Item E, deliberate and act on ...
Can we go ahead and take a vote?
Should we have to take action to introduce it?
Just to introduce, yeah.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, if we could, please.
We only need a motion to introduce.
I will move to introduce the ordinance amending Section 90.999 of the animal control ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Learn something new every day. Okay, item E, deliberate and act on grant agreement number 03292, C-Rule 121, between the City of Raton and NMDOT for project number 19-ST-RF-078, Police Department Traffic Safety Grant. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I know that we were working to get these documents out of the state. I was out of Raton most of the day, so I'm gonna ask the clerk what her recommendation is on this.
As of today, we did not receive the new agreement, so I would just request that we postpone until November 27th.
I'll make a motion to postpone the Police Department Traffic Safety Grant until November 27th.
Second. A motion and a second to postpone item E until the November 27th meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on legal services agreement between the City of Raton and Gallagher and Kennedy, PA, to join the lawsuit against New Mexico Taxation and Revenue for recovery of amounts unlawfully withheld from distributions and transfers of grocery receipts tax revenue. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I will give you an introduction to the contents of this agreement. And Mayor, I would say feel free at any time to take the floor as far as filling in the details on this, and that would be because where we're at on this issue has largely been coordinated through New Mexico Municipal League, and Mayor Segata, as the vice president of the Board of Directors of Municipal League, has had a lot of involvement in the issue in bringing this to the commission. But I will start the introduction.
Sure.
Same here, feel free to jump in there. I think that there are issues between New Mexico municipalities and New Mexico Taxation and Revenue that go back quite a few years, certainly before I was in this position with the City of Raton. And a number of municipalities have issues with how this distribution of grocery receipts taxes is handled between Tax and Rev and those municipalities. So I think generally, these have involved oilfield types of communities that may see a correction in GRT from a taxpayer. So if a taxpayer requests a correction because, let's say, maybe they paid incorrectly at the municipal rate, it should have been maybe a different rate, maybe the county rate or whatever, if they file a correction or an amendment later, then Tax and Rev may make a determination on that without notification to the municipality and just take that share away from the municipality. So municipalities have found that when they get their distribution monthly from Tax and Rev, it's, you know, maybe really severely lacking because they've made this correction without notification, and a municipality can really be hamstrung by all of a sudden getting one of those corrections and finding out you're way off budget on your revenues. City of Raton has talked about the last couple of months being below what we expected and our historic months previous in that distribution, without really understanding why that happened or being able to get that information from Tax and Rev. Now, the reason that New Mexico Tax and Rev won't give you information is they consider that confidential between the taxpayer and Tax and Rev. And other parties, and they would consider the municipality a third party in this, is not entitled to know the business of that taxpayer. So they've held that confidential, and there's been litigation between municipalities and Tax and Rev in previous years. And as a result of that litigation, the courts have ruled that this really is harming municipalities. This can cause severe problems when you find out that your revenue side of the budget is just blown without seeing that coming, without notification. And it may be on an issue that goes back quite a ways in the past. So you really don't have a lot of recourse there as a municipality. So that was the basis of their legal action previously, and they ... the courts allowed that there should be more notification given to municipalities, there should be a limit on how far back you can reach, and you should be able to work out some kind of budget conditions with the municipality where you don't just wreck the municipality's budget. Those are some of the elements. I'm sure there's ... it's more complicated than that, and that's where Mayor, if I'm missing anything, jump on in there. But I think that where we're at right now is in the examination of what's been going on by Municipal League, by some of their consultants, and by municipalities, they have determined, and they're telling us, that this is a widespread problem with Tax and Rev not providing an equitable distribution of grocery receipts tax back to many municipalities. And they're stating that that would include the City of Raton, that a significant dollar amount of grocery receipts tax that was owed to the City of Raton was not distributed back. I think in addition, there is a statutory requirement for an administrative fee to be paid to Tax and Rev out of the municipality's distribution, and I believe that Tax and Rev has arbitrarily decided to exceed that rate and charge a higher rate without the statutory authority to do that. So currently, there is a complaint that is filed in a state district court by six New Mexico municipalities, and the Municipal League has advised us that, and I am now bringing this to the commission, that if the City of Raton wishes to join that complaint, as well as really every other New Mexico municipality, then we can do that during November. The lawyers that represent the municipalities, and that's a firm of Gallagher and Kennedy, they're located in Santa Fe, they will file an amended complaint in early December. And so I bring this to the city commission for your consideration. The question is, does the City of Raton want to join in this lawsuit with other New Mexico municipalities to try to recover some of these funds that we feel are owed by Tax and Rev to the City of Raton, and pursue other remedies that might consist of correcting the administrative fee, could be additional legislation governing this, could be agreements to provide this information to the City of Raton, or live by these other agreements as far as how far you can reach back, what happens when you intercept these funds, and ultimately, some of that gets transferred to the general fund, some issues like that. So those issues ... So those issues have all been detailed for you in the existing complaint. You have the agreement in front of you for your consideration. I would say that the lawyers have indicated to me that they would like to file their amended complaint in early December, so we have till then to take action on that. Now, we have set it up as an action item tonight, but if the commission would like to get more information, if you would like to discuss this directly with the attorney, if you'd like to ask any questions, we have some time to work on that. That's at your discretion here. In the agreement, what you see is a contingency fee. So the lawyers are saying that they'll be paid out of the percentage of funds that are recovered, and that can range from 10% of the funds recovered on behalf of Raton up to 15%, and that would depend on whether this is settled or it progresses along and goes to court, and just the stage of litigation that this would go to. So that contingent fee is between 10%, ranging up to 15%. The agreement makes a provision for the City of Raton to pay the attorneys out-of-pocket expenses, actual expenses. And I don't have an idea of what those might be, but they told me that they don't expect significant out-of-pocket expenses or expense to the City of Raton. I don't know how to quantify that for you, but that's what the lawyer told me. Additionally, you can see that it's possible that there could be a settlement arrived at with Tax and Rev that does not result in a payment. And if that's the outcome, then of course, the attorneys are gonna want paid, and the City of Raton would be responsible for paying their share of the legal fees. Now, currently, there are six New Mexico municipalities in on this legal action. I would anticipate, and Mayor, this is where I would look at you, that there could be 50, 60, or more municipalities that join this action in the next couple of weeks. Mayor, am I missing anything?
No, you did an excellent job bringing it up, and that what this is basically totaling to is, over this course of time and in investigations, Tax and Rev has, for lack of a better term, illegally withheld about $158 million from communities throughout the state. Raton, we're looking at approximately $600,000 that's been withheld from us. We do look for more communities to be involved in that. Right now, Y Albuquerque was one of the leading bringers of the suit. They're owed approximately $23 million. Los Alamos is owed approximately $26 million. They have not joined this suit yet because Los Alamos is a unique environment. They are a county and a city within each other, so I don't know how they're gonna work that out. In discussions with the league like this, we've had this, it's been going on for better part of a year, a little over a year. Fees to the cities are gonna be minimal, is what we're anticipating. While we'd be responsible, if we wanted to bring our own expert witnesses or something like that, it would be a nominal fee to us. Yeah, I don't wanna go out there and say a fee, but I don't think, I don't see it exceeding $10,000. Probably it's gonna be significantly less than that from the breakdowns that we've seen. But this is just something that has, it all started back in 2012 when the City of Eunice, they had a misappropriation, the taxes were collected in the city when they should have been in the county, and when Eunice went back to correct that, Tax and Rev came back and said, okay, you owe us $2.3 million, and you've got 60 days, basically, to pay this. And then it went to court. And then upon all the investigation and the gathering of information, they discovered, wait a minute, wait a minute, you've been pulling money from us all along. So that opened the can of worms. It opened Pandora's box. And right now, we're sitting, like I said, between $156 to $158 million that Tax and Rev owes municipalities throughout the state. Scott did talk about the administrative cost fee. The statute, I believe, says 3.25. Somewhere about two years ago, they arbitrarily raised it to 3.5 without any formal action. They just said, we're gonna raise it quarter of a percent. That to Raton could be an amount of around $100,000, another $100,000. What we're looking at from a league standpoint on that aspect is, instead of going after that money, is let's fix this, put it back to where it's supposed to, how the statute reads, and go on from there. But the other issue now, the city's saying, hey, wait a minute, you owe us this money. And I know we could sure use our share of $600,000. But that's just, and Scott did a very good job laying it out, and we could set up calls with Mr. Folgenetti or the lawyers, whatever you wanna do.
We'll do our best to answer any questions that you might have on this item, of course. This is an unusual
It is.
action item for the City Commission.
I'm surprised it really has not hit the airwaves yet, but I'm sure it will soon.
My only question on looking through this was, you know, what would we do if there was a non-monetary recovery? Where would we come up with our share?
Right. And really, Mayor Protem, I believe our costs would be very minimal should that happen. From the formula that I was given a couple of meetings back, did a rough estimate, and I was looking through everything, $2,500 to $3,000 we'd probably be looking at. But dealing with lawyers, you never know.
Right.
And that's the worst-case scenario, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. This, I read this about three times now, and had to go to the legal dictionary to get some terms answered.
Right.
Department of Revenue has bullied the communities long enough. You know, in the past, when we've had issues that we wanna know this and that, they don't tell you a damn thing. So I think that, as commissioners, I think that we should agree to support this and go after it.
Well, one of the things, too, that brings the question is, the last two months of our GRT have been significantly lower than what history shows. Are they still practicing this, you know?
And it doesn't match, because I've made several trips where I go check the residency in all the motels, and they've been full, and yet we get a lower distribution.
Right.
And Mr. Barry and I did have a conversation with Mr. Folgenetti last week while we were down there, and Bill advised us, you need to look into this, you know, because all the, what he was saying, the communities that he'd been talking to had all received more over this time period, and we received less. So, yeah, it's interesting. I don't know if you noticed in one of the captions there, too, that said, the legislature last year, or in 2017, passed legislation to correct the administrative part, and the governor vetoed it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, I agree with Commissioner Chavez. I feel it's something that we probably should get on board with. I don't believe it's just gonna be six communities. I think you're gonna see
Many more.
dozens get into this.
And I could tell you that the Municipal League has put years' worth of effort and work and due diligence into this. This is years of work represented that comes to you with this agreement. And so they've done that on our behalf as well as the other municipalities, so they really put a lot of effort into it.
And the league itself is out a significant chunk of change already, and they have not asked the cities to contribute to that yet, but now they are.
It was brought up quite a bit at Molly. People talked about it, and everyone's pretty much on the same page, and I've read through all the documents and understand fairly clearly what's going on. And I think, like you said, not only from a monetary standpoint, but from a regulation standpoint
Absolutely.
and a transparency standpoint, that something needs to happen.
Absolutely. Yeah. Like Mr. Barry said, they've been doing this, working on this since about 2012, when the City of Eunice was first assessed the penalty. So it's nothing that the league has jumped right in and said, okay, we're gonna sue them right away, because I'll be honest with you, the first conversations were not for that. You know, you wanna solve this and settle it without that kind of fanfare. But now it's, without getting any cooperation, without going into some details that would probably get me in trouble, I'll stop right there. But it's been a lot of hard work, and it hasn't, the decision to sue was not made lightly.
I think our history with the league is seeing that they do not jump into things haphazardly.
No.
I agree with Commissioner Chavez.
I was taken back when they said that the funds go into a 60-day suspension, and at the time, that's not dispersed. Then it goes into the general fund, which, if I'm not offending anybody, I don't care because they built a $1.6 million soccer field when we were asking for $20,000 for it, and I think
I absolutely hear you. We would entertain a motion to either discuss this further or take action.
I'll make a motion to act and to get the services between the City of Raton, Gallagher, Kennedy, PA, and the lawsuit with distribution and transfer of grocery receipts tax.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to join the action.
So the action here would be, by approval of this agreement with Gallagher and Kennedy, the City of Raton would be joining the lawsuit. It's not a class action issue. It is an individual city by city, but we anticipate that a lot of municipalities will take a similar action. But that would be your action, approval of the agreement with Gallagher and Kennedy. And by doing that, the City of Raton would be named in the amended complaint as a plaintiff.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any other questions? Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-64, Raton Water Works Budget Adjustment Number One. Mr. Barry, Mr. Campbell?
I don't know if we've had one of these before.
That's what I was trying to figure out. I don't think I've ever seen one.
I think generally, the utilities only do a budget adjustment at the end of the year, if at all.
Right.
So that's probably why we haven't seen it. I'm not 100% sure that it requires City Commission approval, but because we do ultimately approve their budget, I think RPS probably had a budget adjustment last year that came before the commission, and theirs are very rare as well. So we do have two commissioners that serve on the utility boards, so they're already aware of the approval of the adjustment that was approved at the November 6 special water board meeting that was held. We do have General Manager Dan Campbell here this evening if you have any specific questions. I think it's fairly self-explanatory.
Typically, we do a budget adjustment resolution because we're actually, consists of primarily one line item, but at the end of the year. But this is actually a requirement. We had two items, bids that came in higher, but USDA, part of our federal funding, wanted this budget adjustment resolution showing that on that one higher bid, even after we made some changes, that we were gonna use the city's capital funds to make up any difference. So we needed to have that in documentation. Besides, it's in the minutes, will be the water board approval, but they actually, with this one item, I'm not positive we actually always do to bring it to the commission also. So at the same time, we're making sure that step was completed. We're trying to complete the final paperwork to begin the filter plant project, and this budget adjustment was one of their requirements.
All righty. Any questions for Dan?
I just, as I was looking at this, being new, so this is all coming out of the supplemental grocery receipts tax fund, is that how?
Yes.
That was my only question.
Exactly. And Commissioners, this would be specific to the filter plant improvement project, and then the distribution project we talked about on Hart and Brilliant, the installation of the distribution water line. So those two things, and it would be the one cent money that's being paid for those things.
I will move to approve Resolution 2018-64, Raton Water Works Budget Adjustment Number One.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve the Raton Water Works Resolution Budget Adjustment Number One for 2018-006. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-65, City of Raton, Budget Adjustment Number Four. Michael Ann?
Mayor Commission, in your packet this evening, we've reviewed our financial statements and are proposing several line item adjustments within the general fund, so there would not be an increase coming out of reserve. It's just to move monies around within the various funds. And then within our fire grants fund, we've received several wildland fire reimbursements, and we need to allocate those revenues to the various expense line items. We did submit our quarterly report to DFA last month, and so with the new, what they call the LGBMS system, it has a lot more line item detail than it has in the past. So a lot of these line item adjustments are to help if we were over budget in a specific line item. In the past, a lot of funds were just kinda lumped into, you know, a couple line items, and now there's a lot greater detail with the new system, similar to our system, even though we don't have the same chart of accounts. So you'll probably see, I mean, we've always done up to about, you know, 12 to 14 budget adjustments a year anyway, but as we do these quarterly reports, you may see more line item adjustments that are just a result of trying to crosswalk our chart of accounts to their new chart of accounts and kinda keep everything so that we're not showing over budget in any specific line item. So we're kinda managing two different budget systems, I guess. This is kind of a new system. I am attending the DFA budget conference training this week, and so we'll start probably doing some advanced training on the new system, which we need. I mean, we just implemented a few months ago, and so a lot of things we're just kinda learning trial and error, and I think that the training will be more valuable now that we've used the system. Now we'll have some questions on how to do some things that maybe the manual isn't real clear on. On the back of the budget adjustment, we are finishing up the street improvement project for Hospital Drive, so I do have a budget adjustment there just to cover engineering costs and also a change order that was done on the project. And then we have some line item adjustments within the solid waste fund and a adjustment to increase our legal services line item on our lawsuit. That would come out of reserve funds. And then within our trust and agency, I also made a note there that we do do online payments to Tax and Rev for our state withholding and our grocery receipts taxes, and that, I guess I had underestimated that during the budget. It's roughly probably about $22,000 a month, so I'm asking for an increase in the revenue and expense there as well. Is there any questions on any of the budget adjustments we're requesting?
I'll make the motion, Resolution 2018-65, City of Raton Budget Adjustment Number Four.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-65, Budget Adjustment Number Four for fiscal year 19. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, City Managers Report. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, recently, our independent audit firm was at the City of Raton, and they completed their field work in the last couple of weeks. They were on site for four days, I believe, and we would anticipate the timely submission of our audit report to the state auditor in December. We'll let you know about an exit conference schedule as we work a little closer to that, but we do anticipate a timely submission. We've had good progress on our construction projects. As Michael Ann had said, Hospital Drive construction has been completed. We're currently working on the closeout of that grant and the other projects that we've talked about with you, the Great Blocks Project on First Street and the Hart and Brilliant Avenue Water Line Project. Progress is good on those. We would anticipate construction will go on for probably another four weeks, but progress is good. The Public Works Department has been using the new asphalt recycler for street repairs, and we've also been using the new loader for various chores, but included in the street repairs. As you remember, when we talked about it, the advantage of the asphalt recycler is we can use that in cold weather, whereas in previous years, we would be challenged to fix potholes or things that pop up on streets in the cold weather. But since we're producing hot mix, we can do that as long as the pavement is dry. We can't do that with wet pavement, but we were doing that. We actually had a manufacturer's rep come to Raton today from Michigan and provided training on the machine, even though we had been here before to initially deliver the machine. We had some training then, we used it. The crew has been using it over the past couple of weeks, but we firmed up that training today. So happy to see that. When we're talking about the need for some street repairs, we're in good shape to do that. Of course, we want to look at use of those millings on streets that have been previously chip sealed or paved with other millings as far as putting a better servicing course on that. So we'll talk about that a little as we go along and we get close to the legislative agenda and we get into 2019. We'll spend a little more time on that. I think the last thing I have for you is, on behalf of Mr. Campbell there, I just talked to him, Raton Water Works is working on the installation of new instrumentation on the Lake Malloy Dam. You remember that drilling was done earlier, and a seepage analysis has been ongoing with the engineers. In those boreings, we'll install a vibrating wire type of instrument, and that will help monitor the free attic surface, which is typically data you need to generate for an embankment dam. That's instrumentation that will tell you the internal workings of the dam. That's not information that we've had before on Malloy. So we anticipate that installation in the next couple of months, and then we'll start to generate that data. That's all I have, Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Berry. Item J, closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-5-1H67, certain purchases and threatened or pending litigation. It's a review of RFPs for Business and Economic Development Services and the landfill lawsuit, Mark Van Buskirk and Lori Van Buskirk versus the City of Raton, case number D-809CV2013-00245. Need a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Closed session.